Thank you, Mr. President. I need to recuse myself from items four and 26 due to my wife's employer working with applicants in these items.
All right.
Items four and 26.
Four and?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay.
Thank you.
Any other specials? Mr. Kwan, please refrain from disrupting this meeting. It's your first warning. Mr. McCosker.
Councilmember Rodriguez, would you like to have the vote on five and six together or separately, please?
Five, six together is fine. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues. You know, items, and I'm going to refer a little bit to three as well. So items three, five, and six today are about demanding greater accountability with respect to the expenditures and the work that we're investing in homelessness. Tragically, we continue to see a lack of information being forthcoming, providing to this council. We continue to demand the same information. What was of particular concern was discovering even some of the outcomes associated with litigation and issues that should have been brought to our attention by the city attorney's office not being forthcoming to this council. And so this isn't, this isn't anything that we should be trying to demand by legislative means, but unfortunately, given the circumstances, we continue to find ourselves in that dynamic.
Stacy Cigara-Bollinger, Candido, Can, Shea Riazati, Adam Smith, General Dogen.
The thing is, the regulation that you guys put in place is destroying the landlord's right, and it making me become homeless, even though I have my home. But because of this regulation, the tenant are bullying the landlord, and we can't do nothing. They are damaging our property. We can't do nothing about it. We can't evict them. We are, they are bullying us and asking us for too much money. And even when we offer them some money, they are asking for more than $24,000. And they're gonna think about it if they decide to move out. This regulation is killing our right and making me homeless. So I don't know, how do you guys think about this process and killing our right? I'm, I'm citizen. I have right to. I pay taxes. I pay more taxes than the tenant. But how come my right is not protected, and they are taking advantage of abusing of the regulation against me? Where is my right?
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker?
I'll just hold it up here then.
Which items would you like to speak to?
My name's Adam from the L.A. Can Human and Civil Rights Committee, and I'd like to speak on number three as amended and number eight.
So item number, okay, so you have two minutes for the items. Please begin.
You're so nice. Thank you. So again, I'm from the L.A. Can Human and Civil Rights Committee. I'm holding my sign that says 270 days overdue, and Mr. Groot, I will get to the point. Number three is relative to developing a program evaluation framework in connection with existing and future homeless program contracts. And so it's always worth naming in this place when certain motions and certain items seem to continue to get bypassed, like Councilmember Yaroslavski's motion on the 4118 report back, that's 270 days overdue, that you're going to vote on something about evaluating a framework around homeless contracts when no one in this room, as far as I can tell, has asked publicly where the report back on 4118 is. We've been waiting 270 days since the 60-day report back was due, and it's still not here. Should I switch to number eight, Mr. Groot?
Yes, please.
Great. Will do. Number eight is about City of L.A. experiencing extreme conditions caused by rainstorms. On Wednesday morning, one of our members at L.A. Can was following the directions from the city, as always, and moved his stuff an hour before it started downpouring, and they crushed his shelter. They targeted him. And so while this, while these sweeps continue to happen, while the reset team from LAPD is driving around at Skid Row every day, targeting people and citing them for 4118, using 4118 to pull people out of tents and run them for parole and probation, arresting people on old warrants for not being able to pay tickets, this is what 4118 is doing. Why aren't any of you asking where the report back is? It's 270 days overdue. I've got color copies, if you like those.
Thank you. Next speaker?
So, yeah, y'all good at collecting, doing reports, calling for motions, doing evaluations. You know, y'all been doing that since 1751, you know? But we don't never see no results from these reports, right? Like this one. 270 days late.
Sir, you cannot, you cannot cover up our timer. You need to move your sign.
Right? It is to the motion. What are you talking about?
Sir, you're covering up our timer.
You're covering the timer in front of the podium.
No.
There you go. You're good. Now you're good.
Go ahead, continue.
And so, I want three minutes back for that. And so, just like I was saying, y'all good at calling for reports, but we don't never see no results of them, you know, less than y'all use them for y'all benefit, which is to criminalize us. That's the reason why we don't never see no results, huh? But then the other, the thing I wanted to talk about, number eight, right? I'm gonna say some of my time for that. Emergencies, right? Once again, creating systems, emergencies. We never get the call about emergencies, just like COVID-19. Where KDL ass go? I'm gonna let him, he didn't, he, he didn't come out and give us no masks during COVID-19. It was L.A. Can that had to make masks and pass them out to people in the community, create COVID-19 information, tell them how to protect theirself, create hand washing stations, right? We did that. When the serial killer was just running around, we didn't get no warning from the city. Where was CD-14? None of that.
So, Speaker, the emergency related to the rainstorms in February. So I need you to connect it back to the item.
Hurricane Hillary was here, we didn't get no warning, right? We didn't get none of that. The last storm just came by, we didn't get jacked. But then when it's all over, we can get sanitation, punk ass, to come around here and take people proper and move people around, right? And, uh...
Okay, next speaker?
That, that's your time.
Stephen Luftman.
Item three, the homeless issue, you know, it's, it's one of the...
I'm sorry, can you, can you pause this? Hold on just one second. Sorry. Speaker, this is your only formal warning. Please do not disrupt this meeting. And that is the speaker in the black and gray camouflage jacket. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, all right. Anyway, the homeless issue, it's, it's huge. We know all it. But the problem is, 4118 was brought before this council. You folks said you would get it back, and here we sit. And we know it's a big issue. One of the things I've been discussing with people is being the executor on a, putting together a show where we, we already have a name for it, where we interview the people that come here and find out why they come here. What is it that makes them so angry that they want to challenge you folks? So I hope that we can put this together and just bring a little more clarity to the city, especially with items like 4118.
Mr. K, you know, I can't tell which item you're talking, speaking to.
The homeless, the homeless issue.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on. Let's go on to the lighting districts. 11324 Strathern. Very hardworking people there. People that are janitors, construction people. Three times their cars have been stolen in the last few weeks. 11324 Strathern. Whoever district that is, I hope that you, you take care of the, the problem. And again, I just hope that all these individuals who are coming here who have something to say that will allow us to interview them so that we can make sure more people hear what their, their causes are. And I'll be back for public comment. Thank you, sir.
Morning, Groot. I'd like to speak on items three, eight, and 24. There's no general comment?
Not at this time. So you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Want to start out with a shout out to Smoke and Scan. And item number three, just want to reiterate, we shouldn't be having any homelessness contracts being entered into until we get that 4118 report back. So if we could move on that, it'd be really nice. Number eight is regarding flooding and a state of emergency. And I think we need a state of emergency related to the illegal political activity of Council President Krakorian flooding the inboxes of journalists with commentary about elections.
So again, Mr. Kwan, I need you to connect this to the emergency that's at issue, and that's related to the rainstorms in February.
Groot, I love how much you smiled while you tried to say that. So yeah, for item number, item number 24.
Hold up, can you hold this time for a second? Mr. Smith, you're instructed to not disrupt this meeting. This is your first and only formal warning. Sorry, go ahead.
For the record, I appreciated the moral support from Mr. Smith. Item number 24 is on lighting in Council District Two, and I think we need a whole lot more lighting in Council District Two. Ethically speaking, Emperor Krakorian wears no clothes, and that is an absolutely hideous sight. I want you to demand that he cover himself up and either repent or resign. Councilmember Rodriguez, you always talk about getting us off the merry-go-round from hell. You try to block commission appointments when they don't file a Form 700. This is so bad. And Caro's got his hands all over this. He's looking for his next home and his next job. So I, I want to respect the time, and I'm quite off topic, so I'll, I'll leave it here. Thank you, Groot. Look forward to seeing you later.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All right, good morning to now 74% of CD-14 who voted against KDL. All items, and are we still following ethics violation, Pauls? You know, lateral rules changes on general comment.
So again, you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
All right, so let's start off. I think you reopened item three, so I'll just say that, that you should, you should provide services to the unhoused that actually help them and get them housed rather than sweeping and harming them. Let's see, let's move on to the, to the agenda items that you're actually going to have heard before the whole council, instead of having only three of them hear it, and that consider that sufficient. We have item eight, which is related to the rainstorms. You know, yeah, you, you did your little stuff, but, but yet you, you were continuing to do sweeps right before the rainstorms, you know? So the unhoused people were out on the street, you often had literally just taken all their shelter away, so they were just sitting out on the street, you know, getting wet, you know? I know you couldn't control it, but you know, schools were still open, work was still open, you know? So people were having to go out in this rainstorm, and we were being told to stay home, but apparently, but apparently, you know, it's completely safe to go out if you need to go serve your, do your, serve your, do your part in serving capitalism. We have, let's see, we got street lighting districts. We have, let's see, hang on, let's see, we've got, and there's very little that you actually let us speak on. We have the Academy Awards on, on the 20, on item 25. We can do the awards to kind of make it a comp, it seems like you're all trying to win an award for worst council member. Let's see, so, but you should try to make sure that the Academy Awards don't actually, minimize the disruption on the local communities and such, and there should be no sweeps as part of this, as part of the Academy Awards. No unhoused people should be displaced for this. So let's, so do that. Yeah, and I guess I have to do general comment later because, because the, the guy who endorsed someone using his, his official campaign statements.
So Speaker, this is not on our agenda, so again, you can use your last 10 seconds on an agenda item. Thank you. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Yes, good morning, active mayor, acting mayor, all fucking items.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Yes. And number one, Kevin fucking up already? Shame on you, Mr. Lion. Look at this taxing, Little Tokyo attacking those nice people.
So item number one is not on the agenda, so we're not open for public comment, so please stick to the items.
It's on my agenda? Number fucking one, fucking 21 dash fucking 1155?
I'm sorry, continue.
Fucking, yeah. Uh, is that right? Yes, can you give me my 10 seconds back you stole from me, Mr. Helium-filled brain? Of course not. How about you, Marquesi? Give me some time back. You interrupted me. You're off topic, Mr. Groot. Now, Kevin fucked up. Why is Kevin taxing Little Tokyo when he took away their street parking? He raised all the parking, destroying businesses, and now he wants to tax them? No one Kevin DeLeone for reelection, no! If you're going to continue to do that, then I'm going to support UNISUS candidate Isabelle. Is she second place? She'll be there soon. Then number three, we have the existing and future homeless contracts. Fuck those contracts. Give me the contract. I'll just take a bulldozer and I'll just run it across the fucking sidewalks and clean this trash out in the street, and then I'll call services. John Lee's the chair of that committee, together me and John Lee, or is it John Lee and I? John Lee and I. We will together clean all of the homeless off all the sidewalks. Well, he works with the FBI. Thank you. Then we have some other crap. CD-4? Am I going to say something negative about Nithya, number 17? No, we're gonna wait. We're gonna wait, but you know you fucked up on number 17. Those of you that support Weaver, look at number 17, you'll know to vote no on her. Is it that bad? Yeah, I don't want to talk about it. I'm very upset. And then let's get to the racist Academy Awards. Giving money to the AMPS? Doesn't Nithya have a conflict of interest? Marquesi? Her husband's in the studio business. I think that Nithya should recuse herself from voting on item 25 because it might benefit her husband. Conflict of interest. Where's Rob Kwan? You didn't pick up on that. I'm penalizing you. Well done. Yes, and finally, we will get to the other items. We don't have time. 24, Paul Krakorian did a good job. I'll be back to tell you to fuck your mothers on general comment. Thank you.
Next caller?
All the fucking items, please.
Good morning. So you have three minutes for the items. Please begin.
Okay, um, start with a shout out to Smoke and Scan. Glad to see you streaming this morning. Let's go to item number one. We got Little Tokyo Business Improvement District. I love Little Tokyo. I just hope these business improvement districts are considering what the workers are making and making sure that people can afford to live in the neighborhoods where they work. Let's go to number three as amended. LSA is a mess. All of these programs and studies, all they do is they fill up the pockets of salaried city hires who are friends of city politicians, and they really don't serve the communities they claim to help. They make salaried people wealthier. And especially with LSA, the homeless services, 211, the things that are promised and the support that we're told we have for the unhoused community, when folks call these numbers and try to get in touch with people who can place them in shelter beds and use them side safe, they're, they don't get the results that are promised. And there's a lot of reports being released on this, and we don't need more money for studies. We know what works. We can purchase homes, purchase hotels, fill vacancies with the people who need them. We could house every single homeless individual in Los Angeles, and it would, yes.
Caller, you've exhausted your one minute on this item. Please move on to another item.
You're such a piece of work, Groot. Fine, let's go on to item, what is it, eight? Let's look at item eight, that's the emergency declaration for rains. So we have these emergency declarations, and what do we do? We help rich people who live on Mulholland. We, we should be, again, getting people off the street. That's the real emergency when it rains, is that people die of hypothermia, and people who live outside have all of their belongings destroyed and flooded by the rain. But these emergencies and the funding that is procured from declaring emergencies is used to fix mudslides in wealthy neighborhoods. Why do they live up there? They need to come down here and deal with all of the problems that all of our tax dollars are not helping fix anything because they're all being sent up into the hills, up on Mulholland, up to Bel Air, and it's really a travesty. And Councilmember Rahmon is really not saying or doing anything. She's supporting these inequitable motions. I appreciate what the last caller said about how y'all only ever stand up to stretch your legs. Part of your job is holding each other accountable.
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller?
Hey, what's good? All available, oh, actually, can you tell me which ones are available? I think you guys opened up one that wasn't before.
You have three minutes for the items. That's items one, three as amended, and eight through 26.
Okay, um, there's a lot of street lighting districts here, items all at once. I think it's interesting how a lot of these areas, their issues, you know, it's not like everyone's neighborhoods go dark at the same time. You know, a lot of people are waiting a long time to get their area, you know, some decent lighting, so they're not scared to walk, you know, home from work at night, or to walk to their car to, you know, because they forgot something in it. But you guys, you know, improve them all at the same time, which is really odd. I would think that the needs, you know, popped up at different times, that maybe you could have taken care of some of these areas before. So, you know, keep that in mind, like, people don't pay, some people, some people pay attention to that. Some people are just going to be grateful and kiss your toes for giving them something, but you need to know how you look. Other items, declaration of emergency. Y'all need to start declaring this kind of things, you know, maybe the week before, not the week after, or the day after, you know, everybody gets hit with a torrential downpour. You know, people are staying outside. Some people, you know, not even homeless, maybe got kicked out of their house because maybe, you know, their parents caught them with, you know, drugs or some shit, you know, so they got kicked out, and they got to stay outside, and then it fucking rained, you know? Not everybody's homeless out there. Some people are just having a rough time. But you, you don't really provide any services. Like, there's a lot of public buildings that we don't open for overnight stays when it's torrential downpours, or during the day when it's like, you know, it's already open. We don't open up inaccessible rooms. You know, there's, there's office rooms all, all across the city in these public buildings that are just closed off to the public, that nobody uses, and that they use to store, like, old paperwork and like chairs that nobody uses, and like furniture they don't know what to do with. So maybe we should open up some of those spaces that we all know exist for people to stay when it's raining like fucking crazy. And it's not like we don't know when it's going to rain.
So caller, you've used your one minute on this item. Please move on to another item.
All right, appointment to the public works. You know, y'all don't talk to the public about none of these people beforehand. We're supposed to just take your word for it, that this person's not corrupt, they're full of shit, and not going to drive our city into the ground? And yet you guys have had appointments that we're not really allowed to question or comment on for the past, like, decades and decades and decade after decade, and yet our city is being run into the ground? So clearly, the judgment of the council cannot be trusted when choosing, uh...
So caller, you're speaking to item number seven, which is not currently open for public comment, so please move on to a different item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that. Yes, sir. Item number, you said 20, 23 is available, right?
Yes, 23 is open.
Yeah, okay, that's an in doubt, that's a grant award. We should be taking as much money as we can from the federal government and applying it and enriching our city, instead of giving it to our friends that don't want to get a real fucking job and clean up our streets or keep the world running. Instead, y'all want to get stupid little middle management, professional managerial class jobs, because you're...
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller?
Are you segregating general public comment from items?
So this is not on the agenda, so your time is going for the items. Please stick to the agenda items that are open for public comment.
Okay, item three, thank you to Rodriguez. And by the way, the variable process is exactly the kind of thing that at LSA, where we've been desperately trying to hold accountability, but the city attorney's office of Los Angeles, first under Mike Schur, who has still not been indicted but lost badly the other night in his election, and then Heidi Feldstein Soto, who has been one of the greatest disappointments that the public has seen since Mike Schur.
So Speaker, I can't tell how this is connected to the agenda, so I need you to bring it back to the agenda item.
Well, LSA, item number three, yeah, you're interrupting, item number three, you're interrupting me. I'm talking about LSA and how things have not been reported to the council timely by the city attorney's office, which is your office, which is why I suggest you remove your beak from the propeller.
That is not on item number three, caller. So again, I need you to stick to the agenda items.
Well, item number three is 4118. I will discuss 4118. I'm talking on the same subject matter that other people spoke about without interruption. So this is exactly the kind of double standard that the city attorney's office tries to have. Mr. Marquis Aristosson ought to resign. He is an absolute failure. He pretends to be a progressive, and yet he just has doubled down on the very same protocols that have got the city attorney's office, that's your office, again, back your shit up, sir, has fucked up. And you continually sit there and heckle the public.
So, Mr. Preben, I've given you wide latitude on this item, but you've exhausted your one minute on it. So please, please move on to another item.
Let's talk about the lighting district. Lighting district, lighting district. And I want to tell you that by shining light on the malfeasance in our districts, in our neighborhoods, and in our city attorney's office, you can't block me from saying that, Groot. You can't do that, and you're absolutely out of line. So I'm asking you to understand a lighting district. It's where the neighborhood has to be assessed, but many people reject the assessment when they talk to their, some don't, and get assessed more money and it covers the cost of lighting. We like that. I think Cigar Bollinger talked about that. But the light shining on the streets, in the, in the alleys, on the malfeasance of the city attorney's office, who you every day suit up to block people who pay their taxes, who participate in their government, and take the time to come down there or call in, and you sit there and heckle them, and you think you're going to go far doing it. Let me be very clear, you're going nowhere quickly, okay? And Fable, who fucked up the other day by accidentally discussing a closed session out in the open, check my article, looking for Manat Phillips.
So again, this is not on the agenda at all. You've been warned already, so you have 10 seconds.
You've been warned. This is your only warning and final warning.
All right, you're forfeiting the rest of your time. Next caller?
Item number three, I am concerned that this was seconded by Ms. Rahmon. On DanielGus.substack.com, I have a story called "L.A.'s Next Corruption Scandal," in which I prove that Ms. Rahmon, who has seconded item number three, has apparently received multiple DSA-LA endorsements in exchange for her sacrificing some of her governing authority, and I believe that's a bribery scandal. And Ms. Rahmon has not denied that she is making decisions like she is here, seconding item number three, in exchange for DSA-LA's endorsement. So I think somebody else should second item number three because it appears to be corrupt, it appears to be bribery in exchange for her seconding this motion, and since Ms. Rahmon has not recused herself from it, I strongly urge...
So, Mr. Gus, you've exhausted your one minute on this item. Please move on to another item.
Item number 24. Mr. Krakorian, the other day, misused his office for the endorsement of Adrien Nazarian, and I am concerned that his motion for item number 24...
So, Mr. Gus, this is not on the agenda item, so I need you to tie this to the agenda.
It actually is. I am challenging, I am challenging the integrity of item number four, which is proposed by Mr. Krakorian, and I'm explaining, Mr. Groot, that my concern about the integrity of item number four is because Mr. Krakorian has documented and acknowledged misuse of his office for campaign purposes, and so I object to item number 24. Stop interrupting me and let me express my objection in my own way unless you'd like me to complain to the State Bar of California about you. So I object to item number 24 because Mr. Krakorian has this week been exposed as misusing his office for political purposes, and I believe that the same concern would apply to item number 24. Thank you very much, Mr. Groot, unless you want a State Bar complaint against you. Item number 25, same reason. Hugo has apparently promised to sacrifice some of his governing authority in exchange for a DSA-LA endorsement. So item number 25, I am concerned, unless Mr. Soto Martinez wants to say that this item is without the co-governing of the DSA-LA, I think it should be taken off the agenda until he clarifies that. Also, Nithya must recuse herself on item 25 because her husband...
Your time has expired. Next caller?
Good morning, Hugh. One minute. All right, so we have general comment. So Kevin, you now have 26% of the vote in the, in the runoff, so so much of the city does not support you, so much your city, your district does not support you. You're going to lose badly in an embarrassing way in the, in the runoff. You have no chance. You should just drop out now, just save your time, save... You, you have no chance. You should just drop out now. Just save your time, save your energy, just resign and just, you know, go figure out if you're gonna redeem yourself for anything and, you know, just get out of this council. Um, we, just resign. Now we have Paul Krikorian, who's, who's taking a vacation on taxpayer dollars in Paris, Paris right now, in France. Um, who's now using his, um, campaign, his, his, um, council office emails to, um, endorse candidates for public office.
He should resign.
And you have one minute.
Thank you very much, counsel. I'd like to give something to, uh, Mr. Blumenthal. He needs to know about something about Simi Park right here. Has a whole bunch of information on a sex offender that she supported when she was at Dunn. Her belief is all former incarcerated people are wanted. This guy was a police officer and her attitude when she was a director before she got demoted was to support sex offenders. I have the docket, the court of appeals decision, Met, the Met News and everything. Should probably ask her why she appreciates formerly incarcerated individuals that were convicted sex offender. This person's even on the.
I'm sorry, can you pause this time? This, uh, person in the red, this is at least their first warning, maybe your second. You have an excuse from the meeting? First warning. Sorry, go ahead and begin.
So I would like, uh, Mr. Blumenthal to ask this loser, Simi Park, that used to be a director, now is a deputy. And obviously you're gonna be a victim like, uh, with other people, like she's done. So I have all the paperwork and everything. I'd like to give it to, uh, Mr. Blumenthal. So you can see what type of cunt you are, Simi.
Next speaker.
All right, so I could talk about anything, right? It doesn't have to be one of the topics of today.
Yes, this is general public comment.
Okay, all right, so the country is too spread out. Um, uh, prior to 1776, the, uh, Great Britain wanted us to not have towns and cities in certain areas because, um, it's gonna cost us too much money or time really, but time is money. So, um, it's in the alphabet. The letter C is the top of an S. The letter J, the capital, uh, J is the, is the second half of a G. And so those are the same letters, G, J, S, C. Okay, so the reason they're in the alphabet is because they, the, uh, Great Britain wanted us to, they, they, uh, we put those letters in the names of the cities so that Americans knew that Great Britain disagreed that we should have those cities. Okay, so if you imagine a world that's like a million times bigger, right? Like I can't live a million miles away from the next person because we're not gonna be able to function like that. Okay, so, um, so there is such a thing as too far apart. Okay, is that my timer? It's over? Okay.
Michael Joseph Pitkin. I talked of the rumors on my mother's side, now on my father's side. I traced my family tree 1,500 years, all through Europe and America's histories. There was a Pitkin in George Washington's cabinet. There is Pitkin, Mississippi, Pitkin County, Colorado, including Val and Aspen, Pitkin Avenue in New York. My brother kept Long Beach from sinkholes as an engineer at Thumbs, a conglomerate of Texaco, Humble, Union Mobile and Shale. I'm a descendant of Marie Antoinette. Is this a tale of two cities? My grandmother is a Kaiser. Again, BIPOC community gossip is, I am a paperclip Nazi. Which now daily I am being gang stalked, harassed, hacked, abused and violated for being white privileged. Fruit of the poisonous tree.
Good morning, you have one minute.
Pardon me?
You have one minute, go ahead.
Um, black men need jobs. It's, they can't get jobs because they're too angry and too hungry. About five years ago, Chief Moore and someone from city council got black people jobs in the downtown area. Uh, two ladies reported having kept their job for one year. The others kept their jobs between two and three months. White people are homeless too, but they don't live on the street. I believe they live in places where they can get jobs, uh, if they want them. This is not so much of a homeless industry, but it's an industry that should be helping people to get jobs. Get jobs if they want them. It's more of a, uh, an industry to help people get jobs rather than to help the homeless. We need jobs more.
Hello again. Uh, so you guys providing free services to tenants. Nothing been provided to landlord. You guys advertising everything to tenant and they are taking advantage. The things you guys provided, this is the mayor's office, they provided me the list. They are not taking landlords cases. You guys are providing wrong information to landlord. All of this information, the public council, the Legal Aid Foundation, all of these, they are not working for landlord. So you guys put the, uh, regulation that the tenant can ask from 9,500 up to 24,650 from the landlord, which is not right. They can send less rent up to 25,045 till we can start the process. So that is all right. Are you guys okay to rent your place to somebody?
Speaker, your time has expired and you've already been warned to not disrupt this meeting. This is your second warning. You're gonna ask you to leave the chamber, sir. This is your second warning. You're talking out of turn. You talked out of turn when you came for specific public comment and you're talking out of turn now. You're causing a situation where three officers have to escort you away from the podium. It's completely unacceptable. And you continue to disrupt the meeting. So this is for everyone. Again, in order to hear as many people speak as possible, we need people to vacate the podium in a timely manner. So, good morning, you have one minute.
Um, hopefully that we can bring some consequence when someone commit a crime. Uh, right now feels like, um, people are having some sort of entitled rights. Just go to a store looting, just go to a store rioting, just standing on the side of the street of the Figaroa and then soliciting sex services to anyone, drive by, to anyone, walk by. And it seems like those kind of, uh, everyday crime, uh, rob someone, follow home robbery or rob someone in the parking lot, you know, get her wallet or whatever, those kind of stuff seems like become the new normal. And then I really hope in the future that the city council can have some policy that make those criminals feel scared. Make those criminals feel that they will be charged, they will be caught and then they will be sent to prison and jail instead of talking about all day long protests and committing crime over and over again. Victims' lives matter.
Speaker, you, next speaker.
Groot, you know how much I love you, at least more than Tania, but you let Bob Blumenthal and Monica Rodriguez speak about 4118 and the report, which you didn't let the public speak about. But you didn't interrupt them. It kind of, it sounds like you're admitting a Brown Act violation. So just let's keep some, some mindfulness of the contradictory legal advice that we're getting here. Uh, I want to begin by saying council president Krikorian needs to repent for his sins or resign. The misuse of political activity from the strongest position in this goddamn city is so fucking inappropriate. I don't know what you're doing here. Please, those at home, call council president Krikorian's office at 213-473-7002 and demand he either repent or resign. Call the ethics commission at 213-978-1960 and ask them to open an immediate investigation. This is wholly inappropriate. Y'all better do something or else this is gonna continue and it's gonna hang over all of you.
Your time has expired. Next speaker.
That's right.
Good morning, you have one minute.
Yes, and as we know, let's give an election update. So Kevin's gonna be facing, I think, Isabel Gerardo. Because as me and, and Eunice know, she's only 148 votes away from the primary against Kevin. Let's give her a hand. Well, it's fucking incredible. Absolutely. That's right. And see, Kevin didn't invite me to that party. I didn't get any prostitutes and free liquor. So I'm not gonna discuss anything with you, traitor. And then we have Ms. Burgess, progressive, one vote ahead against Sam in CD2. Another progressive that might face the runoff against Nazarian. No on Nazarian. He's a piece of shit. And then we have Ethan Waiver, 2,100 votes behind. We're still gonna get you, Nithya, in the runoff though. I'm gonna wear this goddamn hat every day. And finally, fuck your mothers as I promised.
All right, cool. Um, so, uh, everybody's, you know, asked for the report back. Um, don't get too excited. I don't know what y'all expect. Across the country, city councils are rejecting ballot initiatives that are voted overwhelmingly in favor for. Um, they don't want to put them on the ballots. Anyway, uh, our, our city, a lot of the same thing. Uh, they don't listen to us. Don't get, don't, don't, stop trying to, you know, be so polite. We really need to start making real noise. We need to organize a sit-in at city council. We need to occupy the city council chambers. Um, Krikorian, you suck. And capitalist war pigs. That's what you guys are. All you do is divide. Show up Smokey Scan. Generals gathered in their masses. That's you guys, capitalist war pigs.
Brock Landers, Los Angeles private investigator. What's up nerds and virgins? Did you tell those vets how you gave the 100-year-old lieutenant colonel the cheese certificate and not the framed one? Smokey Scan is retiring 50 guns. Moving forward, he's now known as the great Pander. We give it, we take it away. I don't understand how people come on here and they drop multiple N-bombs without a warning and then you announce that it's protected by the first amendment and you can't do anything about it. I talked about accidentally masturbating with the cheese grater one time and you yell at me. It seems like this shows how the council truly feels about black people. Monica, I saw you looking on Instagram for it. It's not available yet, but I am happy to report the casting of the Monica Rodriguez gag ball is complete. They said they're putting a whistle in the middle of it so it will roll its Rs half of the time. Ms. Kathy 420, let's stop at 69 before we get to 420. Ms. Owen, Ohio, see you next month to stretch out that O face. I missed the first of the call. Who's the make-a-wish kid next to the caller chick?
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller.
Yeah, uh, DanielGust.substack.com.
Good morning, you have one minute.
Groot, please, yeah, please check your email, Mr. Groot. I sent you, your boss and Mr. Previn an email. I am putting you on notice. You have to let people make their own points on agenda items in their own way. You are well-educated and you know exactly what you're doing to undermine public criticism and to help chew off a few seconds. If you do this again to me, I am letting you know that I am going to use the recordings of the meeting and file a state bar complaint against you. At most, you'll get a warning letter, but I am being very clear. Let people, especially me, uh, because I know exactly what I'm doing with this, let me make my own points in my own way or you can explain to the state bar of California why you keep censoring the public from criticism.
Mr. Gus, your time has expired. Before we move on to the next caller, just to clarify for everybody who's calling in or would like to speak at this meeting, um, we need to connect the items that you're speaking to and what you are saying to the items in a timely manner. If we cannot tell, as discussed in the rules, then we will ask you to get back on the, the agenda. Next caller.
Hi, this is Ruth. Um, I wanted to talk about some report back that haven't come in, I guess. Um, TF08-0644, the residential hotel ordinance. On August 1st, we were supposed to get a report back in 60 days. Um, 191020, they've experienced expertise boards. Uh, it's endorsed by LSA. I don't know what's going on with that. There's just no action on it and it's going to die this year. We need to be able to raise grievances. Uh, 22-0928, location-based intervention. We're supposed to get, um, reports on those every like six months or something. And then 231194, inside safe operation reports. We still haven't gotten those. Um, I think there's another one in 201376 regarding the LA Alliance case about, uh, monitoring LSA contracts. And why have the city administrative officers homeless strategy meetings been canceled for like a year?
Caller, your time has expired. Next caller.
Hello, city council. Hello, Damon, Smokey Scan. Shout out to, uh, you guys. This is Laguna 74. I would love to have the council declare April 20th as Los Angeles Smokey Scan Day. I would enthusiastically partake in the festivities. I'd also like to see the council listen to constituents, both in person and on the phone. You work for these people. You may actually learn something. Shout out to, uh, Mr. Spindler and Goat Puppet. I hope Goat Puppet gets elected to the city council someday. And, uh, one more shout out to Brock Landers. Brock, I feel your pain. The cheese grater thing is, uh, pretty painful, but, uh, we're hanging in there with you, buddy. Thank you. Remember to tip your bartenders and waitresses and see you next time.
Council president, uh, first of all, I'd just like to say to all my colleagues here, uh, all the women in the city of Los Angeles, all the women on my staff and all the special friends that I have out there in my private life, happy International Women's Day. That's right. I want to say for all my, my male colleagues out there, you know, we gotta play our role in making sure we go against the patriarchy and that's supporting, encouraging and pushing all the amazing women that make us, uh, who we are. And so I want to acknowledge them today and hope you celebrate this day with as much passion that you bring into this council. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Lee, and thank the family of Mr., the family and associates of Mr. Leoni for being with us today. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you so much. Mr. Blumenthal, so sorry.
Be, I remember Barney's smile and I'd like to be added on to that, please.
All right, others? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody.